I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Rockoff.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Schmansky. Councilmember Gabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director Deputy, okay. Finance Director.
Here.
Public Safety Director.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Thank you.
Public Hearing, thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Do we have any citizens who would like to comment on agenda-related items? Yes. Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Margaret Botzer, Manistee County Commissioner for the Seventh District, which includes the southeastward portion of Manistee in the city. And I'm just here regarding the consideration of the discussion on the North Flight Mutual Aid Agreement. I also serve on the nine one one board. I'm still fairly new on that board. I just started on that board the first of the year, but we have had some discussions around that, and so I'm mainly here to assist if it's at all possible. I know Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodspeed also serves on that board as well and has been on that board for a lot longer, but if I can assist in any way, I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we move along with the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine manners. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session, consideration of Manistee High School homecoming parade. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Seeing no discussion, please take the roll.
Councilmember Gabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of Budget Amendment twenty nineteen dash five for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. The City of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council would take action to adopt Budget Amendment twenty nineteen dash five for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, is this the last time I asked this, the other, the negotiations and all that?
Yeah, so we didn't have the information ready when we did the last budget amendment at the last council meeting. We were waiting on the arbitrators bill and the final, well, the final bill for this fiscal year just that just ended from the Labor Attorney, and we got both of those. So that amount of money should cover that. It's gonna be offset. We had budgeted money for economic development in the last fiscal year that we didn't spend any of, so this'll pretty much be a wash with that. And overall, for the twenty nineteen fiscal year, we'll be coming in better than budget. I'm projecting, we're still doing, you know, the year-end stuff, so hopefully this'll be kind of the tail end of the bills from the Labor Attorney for the police contracts and arbitration.
What are we talking for the total amount?
Oh, it's, um, it's mid-five figures. I don't have that total in front of me, but it's, it's not inexpensive.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of an agreement with the American Legion Cannon Veterans Memorial Park. The American Legion Post Ten restored a Civil War cannon valued at ninety thousand dollars. The Legion would like to place the cannon at Veterans Memorial Park. Additionally, they would like the city to provide insurance coverage for the cannon in the event it is damaged. To provide insurance coverage, the city must approve an agreement whereby it authorizes the placement of a cannon in Veterans Memorial Park and stipulates that the city will provide insurance coverage for the cannon. A signed agreement will allow the city insurance carrier to add the cannon to the city insurance policy. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of a discussion of North Flight Mutual Aid Agreement. The Manistee Fire Department is committed to being available twenty-four hours a day to provide emergency medical service and fire suppression. On January first, twenty nineteen, the Manistee Fire Department reviewed its mutual aid agreement with North Flight. This commitment and/or commitment to mutual aid have been stretched. We are at a point that we need to start analyzing our availability to backfill the possibility of turning down mutual aid requests. At this time, council would take action, or no action, on this discussion item. Boy, you're all the way up there.
I'm ready.
All right. Fellas in, would you please?
Good evening. I believe you have a little bit more references in your packet, I believe, some chart and everything. We've had a cooperative agreement with, prior to North Flight, I think it was Munson, to provide ambulance service. ALS service, in lieu of, if they're busy, they come ask us. If we're busy, they come and assist us. This has been going on for quite some time. With North Flight coming into the picture with Munson, we signed an agreement as of January first. We actually were already doing it, but we just had a formal agreement, which I think everybody's aware of. Some things have, the amount of times that we're going out has increased. We have, I have an agreement with the firefighters, and let me back up. In that particular statement that the mayor read, we are a fire department first. We're a fire department that provides ALS citizens twenty-four hours a day for our citizens here in Manistee, in which everybody pays for it to have us here to provide that service. And our guys are committed to do that. We also are very committed to assist when needed and when asked upon, and we have been. The issue that has come up for me as managing this is that we're getting instances when we're being called upon to go out county, Bear Lake, Brethren, One Nakama, and then I need to backfill the station. It's called an all hands. An all hands means Paige goes out to all our firefighters and asking them to backfill the station. I could get one, I could get two, I could get four. The minimum pay per contract for that backfill is four hours per person. And they're there to now backfill the station for fires and/or ALS assistance, okay? We have an agreement between myself and the fire department of like a radius of where they have to extend out to before we'll drop all hands. We won't drop all hands if they go assist at Wendy's in Filer. If they suddenly have to go to Traverse City, then they'll drop all hands, just to give you a little bit of a picture. But we have a circle that we've sort of drawn, and they're very well aware of, that if they know they're gonna be extending out past that, we're gonna drop all hands. The issue that concerns me is when we have calls and we drop all hands and we don't have availability, then I leave the city naked. I don't want that to happen. And I understand, this is nothing personal, the guys and ladies over at North Flight are great people to work with. The administrators that I've met from North Flight are great people to work with. It's just getting more and more difficult for Manistee Fire Department to be able to sustain, to have available people to cover these runs that happen. I just wanna make it perfectly clear, though, that things can still happen where we're gonna be out, we could be in the city and be out on a call. We had that flyer on Davis Street, we could have a medical runs in the city, we might not be able to cover it. You can't cover it all. I think North Flight would agree, we can't cover it all. We can't always be staffed to cover it all. But I need to bring it to the council's attention that it's costing me money to make these, these runs. Yes.
Chief, in the, in the current agreement, is there any renumeration back to the city for runs that are not in balance?
No.
Is that possible? Is, is a financial agreement something that could be developed where the city isn't, or the taxpayers, I should say, are not extensively burdened by supporting the additional support services?
You know, and that I wouldn't know. I know that we're still billing the clients, you know, through their insurance for the run. But over and above that, I wouldn't know legally if we, if there could be, there might be, you know, but that's sort of like then North Flight's contracting with Manistee City to do it, which
Right.
isn't really a, it's a mutual automaticated mutual aid agreement, so.
I think we're getting left out hanging too long. They go take a non-emergency, run to Traverse City, and then we're at the one casino, and we're going to Filer. I'm sorry, I, I'm not for this agreement. I'm not, I'm not for it.
I, I, I respect that. I've had long discussions with North Flight about this. They're, they're a private entity that is subsidiary of Munson. Am I saying this right?
Yeah.
Okay. So they're driven by the calls that they get within the hospital system for these emergent, non-emergent transfers. They can't say no, and they have to go do it. And they're driven by their staffing levels. So I don't know, it's not, I don't think intentional like there is whatsoever. It's just, but they're, I'm just, just wanna make sure that that's perfectly clear. But we, and I know our, our, our guys are very diligent about listening to the radio. We know when we're on deck. We know how many, they're very good about letting us know. Keith will give me a call, say, hey, we're down to one, you know, for the next ten hours or whatever. So we know, and we're there, and we'll respond, and our guy's backfill. But we'll have instances, you know, like a couple Saturdays ago when, at a quarter to midnight, when we responded, and we didn't have anybody to backfill. So, and that was a Bear Lake run. And that was a necessity. If we didn't go, that guy could easy have died. So it's, it's a double-edged sword on that, you know. Go.
Without the mutual aid agreement, could we still make that response call? Would you still have the authority to be able to make a call like that if it were a life and death?
Also would be is North Flight calling, dispatching, could you ask or see if Manistee City could respond? We have, we don't have mutual aid, we have a countywide mutual aid agreement. We could ask another jurisdiction. We could ask Benzey County. Can you see if Benzey County can come and assist us on this call for police, for fire? You can always do that and just make the initial request. Now they have the authority to act upon that.
We, we're currently using one of their ambulances currently.
We were. They're, they're very gracious on offering that. We did get the ambulance back today. We don't know how well it's running. The guys are maintaining, are watching it. We might have to take it back out of service, but yes, they were very gracious in offering up an ambulance for us to utilize why we were down to one.
How many miles is on that thing? How many miles is on?
On ours or on theirs?
On ours.
On ours?
Seventy-nine thousand on medic five, thirty-nine thousand on rescue.
Medic five's our frontline, and it's seventy-nine, and our rescue, which is a lot older, is thirty-nine.
So there's an agreement of like sharing equipment if need be?
I don't believe that's written into the agreement about sharing equipment. That's just a gracious offer that they made. And don't get me wrong, they come into the city and assist us a ton when we're, when we're in need. It's, it's a little bit different, though, is that our exposure, we have a three-mile city, and we're exposed to the county. You know, they run the county and are exposed, assisting out in the city. It's a little bit, my exposure's a lot more, and I don't think they would disagree that my exposure's a lot more in these events than theirs are coming into the city. But they're still driven by the hospital.
Can we maybe discuss in this agreement to have kind of financial backing if we?
I think we could cross that path, but I don't, I don't know how well it would be received, but I'd have to be something that I would probably have to have sit down with North Flight on that. And I'd probably have them this discussion with Mr. Saylor, see?
Where are the other ambulances? One's in Calvo, right there?
Yes, we have one in Calvo and one in Manistee Base.
Okay, and what does the hospital have? It has one, two?
No, in general, for what we have in North Flight, Manistee, we have three ambulances. One twenty-four hour car in Calvo, one twenty-five, one twenty-four hour car at the Manistee Base. Then we have a twelve-hour car that starts nine AM to nine PM that does a lot of transfers from hospital to hospitals, but they, they're not doing transfers, they stay in the area and run as a third ambulance. At this time, we're running it as a BLS ambulance. Due to the medic shortages that are out there nationwide, it's hard to backfill, to have three ambulances running. So that's how we have three technically for Manistee.
Where is our circle encompassed, chief?
The full county. We've responded to full county. But our circle for the all hands is, I think, up at twenty-two, isn't it?
North to One Nakama.
And that's when we'll automatically drop the all hands.
Is North Flight fully staffed?
No.
So if they were fully staffed, would they be able to take care of the room?
I think possibly, but.
I'd say at this point, even if we were fully staffed, which we have been fully staffed, the call volume happens in Manistee County, happens all at once. We don't have the specific data right now in front of us. We're working on building our own for North Flight, but we're doubling, tripling the mutual aid coming into the city. So as we were looking at from the data that you had there from December, which technically we took over January thirteenth, there was thirty-eight calls from the time that Chief and I and Aaron met, there was thirty-eight calls. So as Chief's saying, we all work together hand in hand. We're here in the city running just as many calls, and when our Manistee car is busy, our car from Calvo is coming here. So it's coming just the greatest lengths of distance as well to come here to help the city residents. That's just kind of how we do it. We're sending our cars wherever they need to go. We send them to Mason County. We have a contract alike. If there are other ambulances or a resident needs our assistance, we'll, we'll send them. That way, if our cars are available, we're willing to help.
Are you, are you part of Munson, or are you just?
Subsidiary.
Subsidiary?
Subsidiary of Munson Healthcare. So a not, not profit, five oh three C, Michigan, not profit company. Subsidiary wholly owned by Munson Healthcare.
Okay. I, I'll just give you a little history. I said in, out there, when this was first adopted and it was first started, it was never meant to be a county service. Occasionally, if there was a bad accident or you needed more than one ambulance, we would, we would assist, and we would go out there. But that, that was rare. That wasn't, that was, that was an exception. There was never enough money put aside to, to service the county. It's, when you start talking about backfilling and calling people in, I mean, that's a huge expense. You're gonna pay them four hours whether they're there ten minutes or, or four hours. You're gonna pay them for it. And it affects down the road. It affects our longevity, our retirement, what we pay. It's just, I don't know. What, what do you think?
I, well, first of all, I would hate to be in a position not to be able to backfill. I think it's absolutely critical that we can always backfill. But I am very concerned about the cost and the number of times that we're assisting versus the number of times we're getting assistance. So we have to think of our citizens first because there are taxpayers that support the service. I, I wish it was more equitable, and I, I think at this point, unless, I think we need to keep working toward making it more equitable so that it's not so unbalanced on our side financially.
I think the numbers, and we're talking about us going there, then coming here, let's set that aside and think about it in this manner. I'm having to pay to backfill. There isn't a requirement on their end to backfill on those, you know, they, when they're done, they're done, but I still have to backfill.
Right.
It's still a cost for me.
I know, and that's a concern that impacts us.
They could be coming in here ten times more than we come out, but it's still, I'm still having to pay, and it's very hard to budget for that. I had three officers come in on New Year's Eve at double time for twelve hours, total of double time, on, on a particular, you know, out county run.
Well, chief, what is your solution to this? Do you have a, do you have something?
As I put in the document to you, we still need to have an agreement. We still need to be able to have North Flight's assistance somehow. The amount of times they still come in to assist us, I think, is, is large. The only thing we could do, and we've been really brainstorming overnight at the fire department, is up our staffing at the fire department. And we've been trying to figure out what we could do to do that, to try to make that assurance a little bit more heavy on our end that we will have that. We'll always have the fire backfilled. You know, we'll always have someone there, and it's as simple as having a three-man crew. And correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, as I'm speaking here, but we've talked about this. It's as simple as having a three-man crew, so then you have that one paramedic still back that can run as an echo unit. And I could be speaking out of turn here, but I'm not too up on this. We could, we could do that to assist, and that would help us out tremendously, still have that assistance. Of course, that's costly. You know, to have, I think it's around seventy thousand per person to have another body. But that's also another body that can help backfill. It's also gonna have another body that can be out of fire. You know, we only have, we have eight dedicated people there at the fire department.
Plus, you're wearing out the equipment sooner, because that's gonna have to be replaced sooner. You're running more. I remember back, I'd like to go back in time. There was actually a turf war going on between the city and the hospital. Everybody wanted the calls. Now it's kind of reversing, it seems to be the opposite. Everybody wants their services. Whether we receive a dime or not in payback, this taxpayer of the City of Manistee pay for that ambulance service and pay for that service. Whether we get a dime back or not, they're fronting the cost. And for me, they come first. And I, I don't mean that to sound mean or, or bad, but they're paying for that service. Maybe the county has to figure out how they're gonna protect their people and what they're going to do. Just a thought.
Chief, you mentioned about seventy thousand dollars would be the cost to kind of mitigate the, some of the issue. What have we been, what has been the cost of providing the, the services on this agreement without that extra person? Do you, do you have an idea?
Overtime.
Well, yeah, exactly. Can you kind of, do you have an idea of what that financially costs the city? Is, is it comparable to the seventy-three thousand dollars is kind of what I'm getting at?
It's not, it's not above the seventy-three thousand. I mean, just that overtime for what I was able to find by going back into our laser fiche, looking at our time cards to try to, you know, do it a little archaically to see how much I'm doing. It's around about three grand I paid in overtime.
For one event?
Much, but that's just the overtime.
But on forty-seven events, what, what would you estimate the cost of, the additional cost to the city?
That, I don't think would be in excess of ten grand. But that seventy grand is just for one firefighter.
Right.
We would need it up and buy a couple firefighters to get that adequate staffing for three per shift, so. And we could have three per shift. We called out to a medical, out to a fire, or two medicals. The North Flight could be on, you know, two medicals themselves, and we would still be, and I think the city realizes that, I hope the city residents realize that, we could have that, you know, we want to prepare, but we could have that happen.
How much less expensive would it would be if we paid North Flight to come in when we needed them versus us having to backfill?
I think that if you, if you go, come into, I guess I gotta.
I think the reason that we're backfilling is because we're all assisting.
And we have to backfill with firefighters, because we have to man the station, so North Flight would have to have firefighters to do that.
So, so if the county, for example, and again, I'm just, just trying to get a semblance of the financial impact. So there's a, a financial impact of at least ten thousand dollars above and beyond to the city right now?
Correct.
So if the county, for example, was able to provide the city with a ten thousand dollar fee to, to continue with the, would this bring us to a break even? Is this a doable solution, or is there still other issues that?
That is just, I, to me, that would just be a small Band-Aid, and it would just be paying for still exhaust and our officers for coming, our paramedics for coming in. You need that extra bodies. You need those extra bodies to be able to make it whole, to make it work.
Then if I understand correctly, there's no guarantee when you call for backfill, when you make that call, that you're gonna get people.
Correct.
You may not get anybody.
Correct, but I could tell you probably it's less in one year or less in one hand that we didn't have backfill. Our guys are very good about coming in. And we, we don't just backfill for the stuff we go out county. We have stuff in the city. If we have to take somebody up to Traverse City, we have to backfill. If we have to take somebody down to Luddington, we have to backfill, so.
So do you have a solution?
Hire three more people.
Anybody else?
Would it be, would it be cost effective for North Flight to hire more people? Can we?
I think that, you know, in, in our discussions recently that we've had that even like Keith has said, even at full staff, they would still, with their call volume that they have, it could still possibly not, they would still possibly be strapped with the call volume, even with three rigs, correct?
Yeah, you have to look at how your city residents, the amount of times in which you guys should have the data. How many times do they take them to Manistee Hospital? They don't take them to Traverse City. Most of those patients have had a stroke, chest pain, whatever the situation is, a medical emergency, trauma, whatever that is. Once they get to the hospital, they don't call the city back, they call North Flight. So we continue the transport from that facility of those city residents wherever they need to go. Grand Rapids, U of M, wherever it is. We take them from that point forward, which where a lot of these transfers come from. So then we're unavailable because we're continuing the care further to a bigger hospital from Manistee Hospital. So that's how a lot of times our transfers happen, and how we go short-stacked is because of the transfer load. And it's not just all city calls. It's everywhere around. If we take them to Manistee Hospital, they stabilize them, and if they can't care for them there, we take them elsewhere. And so that's where a lot of our call volume comes from.
Have there been, have there been more transfers and more calls since the OB closed?
There's been a few extra ones, but not as much, it's not as many as what people were anticipating. They pretty much, Doc Robinson set up a protocol, which I've communicated with Doc Robinson, he's so, so is Chief, and he's more than willing to fit into the picture wherever we need to go. We're seven months in as North Flight here in Manistee's operation, and we were talking with Chief. I understand the financial burden that is going on with his budget and calling in the crews with four additional hours. But when you start weighing out the cost, if they put on more people and we put on more people, there's gonna be times still that we're hurting for manpower. There's just those costs. Structured fire in your city or mutual aid that they give them, we have a contract already in place that we send our crews to. So we're taking our ambulance out of service to come rehab the firefighters. We're trying to do whatever we can to help in every facet. It doesn't matter where it is, we just wanna do what's best. Sometimes it runs short. But we also cover Wexford County and Grand Traverse, so we get ambulances sent from Wexford and Grand Travers as well. They come out to us to assist us with transfers just as we send our nine-to-nine car to assist them when they're running a lot of call volume. So we're all trying to help one another, but some days it's just trying with all the transfers that come out. So that's the difference. I mean, if the city takes them just a mile down the road and drops them off, we'll have to continue the transport, the thirty miles or eighty miles, wherever they need to go. And then when we have to do those, then it takes our car out of service for a while.
Chief, can, are you aware of what Luddington does with Spectrum and, and covering of Mason County?
No, I'm not.
Luddington don't transfer people. They're not an ambulance fire department.
Have we checked any kind of other communities that have this?
They just have first responders.
We've looked at, is one of the model communities that does it is the City of Alpena. They cover it for the full county, the fire department, the ALS system there, so. I mean, that was one of the discussions we had today is, is maybe looking at what they do. I mean, we have to keep looking to see what is out there. We've recognized the need, if we're gonna try to continue to provide the service and have this agreement, that we would need more manpower to assure us that we'd have people. And this isn't just Chief Cole's, Chief Cole's are trying to come up and trying to get more firefighters. This is Chief Cole's are trying to make sure that we have the people here and still be able to have the relationship that we have with North Flight right now.
So if, if North Flight was, if you were fully staffed, you had everybody on board, wouldn't the calls for aid, for mutual aid from us be less?
I, I think that's hard to, it's hard to say, 'cause you.
Well, I know, I know day to day, it's hard to say.
Right.
But overall, it would appear that if you were fully staffed and had the vehicles available to do things, then we would be called less.
And I, I might be speaking out of turn here, though, but as our. as our hospital system changes here in town, to not do a lot of the critical stuff within-house, transfer's going to keep going up and up. They're going to keep going up and up. We're just going to have a place to go get a Band-Aid, okay? If we keep doing that locally, this is what's going to happen, and they're going to be extremely busy with, with transfers. Because everything that goes there will be then shipped out somewhere else, Cadillac, Traverse, Luddington.
I'm just looking for solutions so that we all win in this situation.
Oh, I totally understand.
I'm not trying to-
Right.
Pick on anybody. It's a-
Our population's getting older, I'm sorry. Our population's getting older too in town here.
Yeah, I don't think that our call volume's ever going to go down, or we're going to still be needed a lot to, to maintain, I mean, we've hired, hired four great people here recently, we have a great team here, uh, but to maintain, and to keep maintaining that professionalism and that level of service, I would recommend that we look at, you know, hiring more people. And I didn't put that in the memo, but that was asked of me, is what do you recommend? City manager would be great to hear this, you know, it's when he comes in and work tomorrow, and Chief Coles was asking for more people.
I'm sure to text him tonight.
Yes.
Well, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but it seems to me that Munson Hospital should be foot, footing part of this bill to, to beef up North Flight. I don't know why, because we're, we're basically, the city, the city is carrying the burden financially.
And, and that's kind of what I was getting at, if Luddington doesn't have any EMS service from their fire department, and they are able to provide ambulance service for Mason County.
Life, they have life ambulance service.
Right. Well, what I'm saying, they have an ambulance service that's capable of providing it for the county, so why can't? I guess the question.
And I agree, I was thinking the same thing. Ever since the changes happened at Munson, it seems like we are putting the bill and getting more of, um, the stress put on us. Has there been any discussion with the hospital on what's going on?
I have not had any discussions with the hospital. I think that they have their own lenses, that they have Tim Colesal in their, their room, they need to get Tim Colesal somewhere else, let's get North Flight here to transfer him. Okay?
Yeah.
That's just, you know, how the medical world goes. To me, in the ALS system, you can have a very vibrant ALS system, still provide ALS assist, assistance throughout the county here, but then also have that subsection that handles all those BLS, all those transfers. Does that make sense? I think that, you know, putting our heads together, maybe as a county, or maybe as a city, or maybe working with North Flight, you can actually try to get some type of working agreement here to make sure that we have the ALS, but we'll also be able to cover all those transfers. That can easily happen. It's going to take, it's going to take money, it's going to take the county's buy-in. Okay? It's going to really take the county's buy-in, but I don't think anybody here looking at me right now can say to a county resident who's paying how much for, for ALS services right now? And they still get the service, let's pay some money now so you can get that guarantee. Does that make sense?
Sure.
But I think they also have to realize is, our transfers are not going to go down. They're not going to go down. And we want to, they want to keep providing ALS service, and it's going to take manpower. Either North Flight up in their amount of people, or the city.
I really do believe that Munson Hospital should be engaged in this discussion, so that they know what the impact is on.
I would agree, and I think during our-
I'm disappointed that they're not here represented in some way, and I think they need to be invited to a, to a meeting.
Our discussion last week, um, I had a meeting with North Flight, that was one of the areas that came up that probably needs to happen, is a good discussion with them, so they, they realize, what is the trickle-down effect when we're having two of North Flight's rigs on, on a transfer? That leaves them possibly one ALS rig for the county, and we're warming up on deck, you know, we're, we're waiting. And all they have to do is a tone drop. Or let's say we're already out on one call, and then we'll be asked possibly backfill, so. I don't know if I threw out more questions for you, but at least hope I painted a picture about what's going on. Go ahead, Jim.
We'll leave that for a later discussion.
Well, again, go ahead, Jim.
Fact is, I'm not assuming, I'm just assuming. But as our, but the caliber rig, and I've got some questions for you. If they're out going to Wells, if they go to, um, Benzey, or to Wexford County to assist out there. You've already put us in, a car down, you've already put up a car down. If they take a transfer at work, you guys are a car down. I'm sorry, I, we're getting our butts handed to us here in the city. And, and, and I'm trying not to bring up a lot of bad, you know? But you guys are kind of causing this, when you put all your rigs, send all your rigs out, and leaving us, the city, and you're just depending, just expecting us to do it. It's not fair.
What we're doing is sending services to people in need.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but-
Those are the same citizens of Manistee City.
Okay.
Are we able to take care of our own if we, if, if, nothing, if, if we were just the center of the world here? And with what we have, are we able to take care of our own?
Yes.
I, it concerns me, though, because I've been in a situation personally with my family where our car was busy. And if we don't have that, because we can't like hundred percent know that we're always going to be available.
I don't think you ever, can never-
I mean, I don't want to ruin the relationship, though, because there can be it's where we can lose someone because we just couldn't get to them, because we refused to work. And I get what you're saying, but-
Are we-
Moving forward, if we could hit the hospital involved in discussions, if we could possibly see if we can get um, financial backing, and then look into possibly hiring, and then reconvene, that's my input.
If we, just, I'll, I'll stay on that point. There's never any guarantees about the amount of runs you're going to have. However, you hire more people, you continue on with the numbers that we're going to have, and going out county, a lot of that's going to be still circling back in. Yes, we're not where we probably want to be according to what probably Mr. Bradford wants, with the amount of money coming in for our runs. But if you have more people and we continue on with these calls, or we get into some type of agreement with other townships, I don't know. You just don't know how that might pan out, but that's a lot of discussions that we need to have.
Army contract with city residents.
Totally agree. Yep, I totally agree.
I, I think Chief Colesal makes a really good point about the county, especially now that they're out of the hospital business. The county residents, they don't have to pay for any of this. And so there's always, always, always going to be this cost differential between the city services and the county services, and in a variety of areas, but that's going to be potentially difficult to overcome if you're looking for additional funding from the county, because right now they're getting it for free, in, in assets, I mean, their insurance is paying or whatever. It may not be the most timely response, maybe there should be another rig that, that somebody has here to help with response time in the outer county, but that's always going to be a challenge, um, but I think those conversations have to be had.
And, and again, the same thing would, you could say for the cities of, the city residents of Luddington, they're not paying for ambulance service either, unless their insurance or themselves on a call.
That's correct.
So, again, um, I, I, I think that the city of Manistee wants to have the ability to have the fire department provide those services, I think that's why we have it. But again, within reason, and, and not pay for things that extend outside of the city. So there's got to be some financial, or some kind of equity within the city to the county, perhaps to make this really work well.
I think it works in Luddington, because they have, they have those first responders who go and got to secure everything and get things started.
I just, I want to go clear some things off.
This is Chris Jeffrey's one of-
Firefighter, paramedic. As you guys know, I left for a short amount of time, went back to Life EMS, operated as field supervisor there. Life EMS is a private EMS agency, they're contracted by Mason County. Mason County does pay Life EMS's stipend to have that service there. They have a certain amount of truck, but like North Flight, they have to cover their areas. Life EMS covers Oceana, Lake, Nuego, Mason, and they have a certain amount of trucks in each of those areas. They try and move them around, a lot like North Flight is doing, but those counties do pay in. The issue North Flight has is our county here has chosen not to pay into their service to guarantee or have any kind of say in what they offer. So that needs to happen at the county level, if the county wants to have say here. So I just, it's not that, Mason County residents do pay taxes to have that there, it comes from the county into that fee there. And that's all based off a contractual agreement between the county and Life EMS. And that is an absence of what's going on in Manistee County, because Manistee County, I believe, opted out of having a written contract with North Flight.
Interesting.
I just wanted to clear up those things with Mason County, we kept saying Mason County doesn't pay, Mason County doesn't pay, but we do pay.
But you're paying from-
I might add that North Flight and the counties that were in Traverse City, Wexford, and Manistee, were a hundred percent user-paid based. So we don't receive any tax dollars from any one of those counties, so. And to staff an ALS truck for us for, and much lower, we have a much lower benefit cost than you guys do at the city here. It's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one ambulance out in seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So it's an exorbitant cost for the hospital to say, yeah, we're going to add another truck in Manistee when there's no secret, we operated a loss here, where the hospital's not making any money, and North Flight's losing money by being here. But the service we're providing is moving those patients from the hospital hospital where they're needed. And I absolutely would recommend a meeting, to set up a meeting, so we can talk about this together. And I will absolutely make sure we have a hospital representative here.
I think there should be, county should be represented also.
Yeah, the county, we need to have somebody from the county here as well, so.
When you talk about the cost, by us continually running our ambulance up and down the street, we have to absorb that cost as a city, there's no, there's nobody to replace that, would you say? How many hundred thousand?
Absolutely, you're incurring costs by going further out in the county, no questions asked. But to, to staff an ambulance twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, static staff three hundred and sixty-five days a year, costs about us, costs about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So we don't take in the revenue to offset our costs here in Manistee. It's a loss. Where Munson Healthcare provides subsidy for us to operate, and has every year since nineteen ninety-one, since we started. And our air, our air service, you probably know, we partnered with, with Aromed, and we call it North Flight Aromed. We were subsidizing the air service to the tune of a million dollars a year. So ground, our ground operation loses money overall. We have some areas that make a little bit, most areas lose. There's no money in nine-to-one EMS when you're a user-based service, so. We, we, we receive very little funds, twenty-five thousand dollars from Wexford County is what we receive. Runs our operation six days there. Um, in Grand Traverse County, we receive twenty-five thousand dollars as well for education, and it's for education for EMTs in the county that want to take an EMT class. We used to provide the education, so that's a pass through to Munson Regional EMS. So we, that's all we receive, otherwise it's user-based service. So, it's, you know, it's, it's, it is an issue, funding. And, um, we, we, we made the commitment to fund and to staff the three ambulances here the best that we can. And we are giving that our best effort every single day to make sure those trucks are staffed, which they are. I know when West Shore EMS was here, it was difficult in staffing that third ambulance. So going into it, I thought three ambulances staff would meet the need, but this is why we're all sitting in the front row here, all of us are in North Flight administration, we care about your community, we don't want it to go underserved. So we're committed to make this work. And that's where we need to, we need to sit down collaboratively together and figure out-
So I, I think what I- I think what I hear you saying is, and, and I kind of agree with this, that this isn't a city of Manistee problem, it isn't North Flight's problem, it's all our problem. And we need to figure out a way that we're going to supply the service for the people in Manistee County, and how we're going to make that happen, so nobody is absorbing an enormous amount of cost to, to do that. If, if they want that, if the county wants to get on board, or the townships want to get on board, but we have to figure out a way to move forward with that. What would be your next step, Mr. Coles? Is setting up a meeting, uh?
That'd be my next step, but I just want to make sure everybody understands, as I said in the beginning, this is nothing personal with North Flight.
Sure.
We're a professional organization that is a fire department that provides ALS services. We have an average of two-minute to three-minute response time to everybody here in the city. We want to maintain that, and I think everybody demands that of us. We shouldn't be going away to anything different, or else that level of response will, you know, they'll disrespect anybody else, will go down. So anything we do, we always have to keep in the back of our mind, we need to still maintain what we do in our response time. I think a meeting is needed, however, I have to keep monitoring that, you know, that overtime budget, and wearing the guys out, you know, coming in at these, on these four-hours call-ins. So I, I think they'd rather have the ten-minute than the four-hour stay.
Well, I think I hear you saying we need each other. To be successful, we need, to agree we need each other, that's another discussion, but, and I don't hear anybody here on council disagreeing with that. I think I hear them saying they're trying to, everybody's trying to figure out how do we make this happen, and how do we make it work for everybody?
I need to minimize the city of Manistee's exposure to these calls somehow. Somehow we need to do that. That's what really the bottom line is.
Have you turned down any, um, any calls at this point?
We've turned down a couple transfers.
Okay. And were those resolved somewhere? I assume they were.
Yes.
Who should be in charge of getting all these people together so we can say, I want to work out this whole problem?
Probably Chief Colesal. I'll, I'll let him know. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get it, I'll get it done, Mr. Krabowski, yes.
Okay, in, in a fairly short, within a couple of weeks?
I'm certain that I will be on the horn with Keith tomorrow, and we'll start this ball rolling.
You're welcome, Dave.
Okay.
Since we're on this topic, I just, I had an incident, um, a couple days ago in my own family, where, um, a response came through, and they were amazing, so this is really, um, something that we still need to have that response time, that three-minute, so. And I want to thank the Fire, like EMS.
Well, thank you, Chief, for being on top of this and bringing this concern to council, and, um, it's much appreciated. We don't, we didn't really know until we, we got it in our packet that there was, there was an issue, so. I'm sure all the council members appreciate you bringing this before us, and, oh, I'm sure everybody here will work hard to come up with a solution for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be right back. Notice and communications, and announcements. It's a report from the Finance Director, Gas and Oil Board, and Brownfield Development Authority. Mr. Bradford?
You're going to get me for three different presentations tonight, so I'll try to keep them short. First one's going to be reporting on the activities of, of our office, Finance Director, Treasurer, and the Administrative Services Department. And, uh, this org chart just kind of shows, um, my scope of responsibility, um, the staffing, uh, down in the Clerk Finance Department, we have five people, including myself. And then I also oversee Mark Hanson, who does, uh, facility management. And then a couple contractors, Molly Whitstone, who's our assessor, and then, uh, our primary contact with our IT folks, Caleb Eifert. Um, in our office, we have forty-one years of experience, Heather Puffley's been there for eighteen years. Uh, myself has been there for seventeen years, and then Kelly's been there for three years doing the utility billing. Laura's been there for two years, and our newest hire was Angela Raab, she's been there for a little over a year, but she, um, a- all of the people that have been there for shorter periods of time have a lot of experience with other employers, so we really have a lot more than forty-one, but forty-one years with the city. Um, I just want to say thank you to council again, uh, for allowing us to procure some updated financial management software. We did that, um, and implemented it in the fall of twenty-seventeen. It has been a great help to our office, and I think to the city overall, it's working very well, and it's, it's greatly streamlined our processes. So we just want to say thank you, because everybody finds that software very easy to work with, and, uh, they have also really good, uh, support if we have any issues. Quick run-through of some of the administrative services responsibilities, we receive all the revenue for the city, and invest all the cash, um, we pay all the invoices for the city. Our staff arranges any borrowing, whether that's bonds, or rural development loans, or installment purchase contracts with banks. Uh, we do the budgeting in conjunction with the manager's office and the department heads. We do all the bookkeeping- We do all the bookkeeping, um, financial analysis, any financial reporting, or other supplementary reports. Um, we're responsible, uh, for the frontline of the IT and then managing the IT contractor, excuse me. Um, obviously, City Hall, uh, Mark Hanson oversees that as well, some other city facilities. We handle a lot of questions at the Treasurer and Clerk counter, um, and a direct traffic for City Hall, and make sure people are getting on the right, right facility. And then we do the back-office work for the Ram'sville Regional Center for the Arts. Uh, just some real quick metrics, um, you can kinda see those, uh, we process like eight thousand tax bills a year and forty thousand water bills, and you can kinda scroll through that, but I, it's, the summary there is it's a pretty busy place, especially at certain times of the year, like when tax bills first go out. And also in the summer, um, you know, the, we have the boat ramp and the marina, which kinda add to the, the level of responsibility there, so. Um, it's never a dull moment. Uh, just wanna run through some of the last fiscal year or twelve-month highlights. Um, with the hiring of Angie Rab as the Deputy Finance Director and Treasurer, we've been kind of, um, moving a few duties around where they, where they fit better. Uh, for example, Angie's doing a lot of the audit preparation this year, which has freed me up to do some other things that I hadn't been able to get to, particularly, um, in regarding to the rural, uh, rural development financing and, um, some IT things that had been lagging. Um, so we work together really well, uh, to do that. Um, we're continuing to implement the BSNA software. Um, we revamped the budget document a little bit last year. That's an ongoing process. We make little tweaks to that every year to try to make it more readable and legible and easier to prepare. Um, this year, I spent a whole bunch of time assisting the city manager with contract negotiations and also the arbitration process. Um, we're in the process of finalizing our eighteen million Phase Two rural development application. Uh, I sat down with the city engineer today to hash out a few last details, and we're hopeful that can get submitted by the end of the week. Um, we also wrapped up a multi-year project that I, again, assisted the city manager in completing and adopting our Employee Personnel Policy Manual. Uh, that's just been one of those things that never kinda rose to the top of the list, and we finally got it pushed over the goal line. Um, I just wanna give a shout-out to the, the staff in my office. Um, uh, Heather was out, as you know, for about six months on medical leave, and, um, my staff down there and her staff just really stepped up and, and did a great job, and we never missed a beat. I mean, it was a lot of extra work, but they really, really did an outstanding job. And I just wanna acknowledge them in front of council and, and to the public that they really stepped up and did a nice job. So that's all I have on the Finance Department. Are there any questions there? All right, if not, then I'll move on to the Oil and Gas Board. Okay. Um, here you've got, uh, Aztec Producing Plan. As you all know, that sets up on the north side of town there, and, uh, is processing gas and, uh, gas solids, uh, twenty-four-seven. Um, and that's what generates the royalties for the oil and gas, not only for the city, but for the state of Michigan and for a lot of residents in town. Um, the Oil and Gas Board is comprised of, uh, Mayor Zalinski, uh, as the Chair, myself as the Vice Chair, Councilmember Pontiac, um, and then two citizens, Doug Parks and Jeff Rowe. Um, Thad Taylor, City Manager, is a non-voting member, and Cindy Lulakovich is the longtime Recording Secretary. Just a quick overview, um, you've seen this before. Obviously, the Oil and Gas Fund is charter-protected. It's a trust fund. And, um, the reason it was established is to protect those royalties and the income stream for future generations, and, uh, it's done a very, very good job of doing that. Um, that money would've been spent many, many times over had there not been that charter protection in place. Um, the Oil and Gas Investment Board is charged with overseeing the investments and the Investment Advisor. Um, we, since two thousand and eight, have used Bartlett Wealth Management as our Investment Advisor. We've been very, very pleased with their performance. You'll see some of that later in the presentation. Our two primary contacts there are Woody Hubel, who's the Lead, uh, Portfolio Manager and specializes in equities, and then Troy Snyder, who works on the fixed income portion of the portfolio. Uh, the Oil and Gas Board has an investment policy statement. Um, it's pretty well-set. We had several, um, changes on that early on, kind of tweaking it, but it, it's been in place now for probably three or four years with really no changes. That's what the Oil and Gas Board, uh, follows to manage this fund and directs the Investment Advisor. It's, it's approved by City Council. Um, it basically identifies what we can invest in, which is pretty much the same things as public pension funds can invest in. So it's a wide variety of, uh, stocks and bonds and, uh, um, other types of investments. We have an asset allocation, which is the real key to, uh, making sure that this fund can, can sustain for the long haul. Um, we do sixty-five percent equity, thirty percent fixed income, five percent cash. That's our target allocations. And we have performance benchmarks that are established in our, in our investment policy, and then actually, uh, the, one of the real critical things is the spending rule percentage, which we lowered several years ago from four and a half percent down to four percent in an effort to make that more sustainable. For twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the budget you just approved, uh, the twelve-quarter moving average, which is what that spending policy is based on, was about ten point oh million, just a little over ten million. And that four percent you, your spending rule yielded about four hundred and one thousand that can be spent for, towards capital projects. Um, that's the equivalent to about two and a quarter mil. So that's a pretty significant portion of cash that the city wouldn't otherwise have, and most communities don't have. And that's been very, very, very helpful. Without that money, we would be doing very few capital projects outside of the water and sewer utility. Um, it's up about ten thousand dollars from the prior year. Um, and from fiscal year twenty-eleven through fiscal year twenty-twenty, it's generated over four million dollars for capital projects. This chart graphs our oil and gas royalties going back to nineteen ninety-six, and you can see they've ticked up a little bit in, uh, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. When the gas prices plummeted back in twenty sixteen, seventeen, they shut the wells down for a period of time, and now they've started them back up as prices have recovered. Um, hopefully, that trend will continue. Uh, if you look at the oil and gas earnings, uh, we had a really good year in twenty nineteen. Everybody remembers the, uh, and this is fiscal year twenty nineteen. Everybody remembers the market plummeted right at the end of calendar twenty eighteen, but it totally recovered since then and has continued to go up. So you can see a little, just a little over a million dollars on audited numbers for, uh, realized and unrealized gains in interest and dividend income for the portfolio. Uh, this is a excerpt from the March thirty-first, um, report that, uh, Woody Hubel provides from Bartlett and Company. Uh, I don't have the June one yet. It's gonna be coming out soon, but this basically shows what our asset allocation is. You can see the targets over there, five percent, thirty percent, sixty-five percent. They're pretty much right in line with the targets. Um, that's what they try to do. They don't wanna stray too far one way or another, although they will adjust that at times if they see market conditions that warrant it. This just breaks down the equity sector. I always find this to be an interesting chart, uh, compares it with what the S and P five hundred is. And you can see it mirrors that pretty well. Um, they are, uh, overweighted in a few areas, like information tech and particularly healthcare. And that can be for a variety of reasons. One, it could be that the investments that they've chosen in those sectors have performed really well, and they just haven't rebalanced it yet. Or it could be that they're overweighting them for economic reasons, and typically, it's a little of both of that. Um, you can see they're underweighted in things like real estate and utilities, but as the economic conditions change, those adjust as well. For a long time, they had very, very little utilities because they just weren't performing very well. But as the bull market has now exceeded ten years, at some point, we're gonna have a downturn. Those utility stocks may be a little more attractive because they pay dividends. So they're, that's what the sort of stuff that our Investment Advisor looks at. And then this is the most impressive chart. Um, this shows their performance, um, over the long term. So if you look at that top line, the total account since inception, three thirty-one oh nine, they have a compounded annual rate of return of about nine point four percent, um, which is very, very, very good. And you can see the trailing five-year, three-year, and one-year, you know, it's all, uh, with, with the exception of the five-year, the, the three and one-year and the quarter-to-date are all up close to nine percent. And they, it's broken down between the equity, uh, fourteen percent compounded annual rate of return over that time period on equity, and about three point seven percent on fixed income. So, the market has done well, but this has tracked the market very well, and, um, and they're a very low-cost provider, so the, the board is really happy with their performance. I believe that's the last slide. Does anybody have any other questions on that? Okay, if not, I'll move on to the Brownfield Authority. My mouse will stop jumping around here. Wow, it's been really- There we go. Okay. Okay, so the Brownfield, uh, Authority, uh, Board and Staff, ma- the members of the Board are Megan Kempf, Marlene McBride, Shelley Memberto, who just was appointed recently, Ronald Pomranki, and Roger Yoder. Um, I am the Brownfield Administrator, and my role is the Chief Financial Officer for the city. And then, just recently, um, our longtime Brownfield Consultant, T. F. Taxiatas, retired from being the consultant for the city's Brownfield Authority. We went out for requests for proposals and vetted those responses, and the Board, um, elected to contract with Roman Wilson from Fishbeck Thompson, Karen Huber, and, uh, he came on board in December of twenty eighteen. A quick overview of the city Brownfield Authority, um, obviously, there is a County Brownfield Authority. The cities was created after the County Brownfield Authority, and the main reason it was is to give the city a little bit more control over projects. But with that said, we work very well with the County Brownfield Authority, particularly on like the Jocelyn Cove product, or project. Um, our Board meets at least annually or as needed. Um, we didn't, we weren't able to schedule a meeting in January, which is when our annual meeting is, and, uh, so we're actually having our first meeting of the year tomorrow, cause there's actually enough things to go onto the agenda. So it's been a little bit slow, um, since Roman's come on board, no fault of his own, just it's the ebb and flow of projects. Um, we have a five-member Board, and the members have to be their city residents or have an interest in property in the city. What is a brownfield? Um, well, you know, everybody has their kind of common idea of contaminated, blighted property being what a, what a brownfield is, and that's true. Uh, it's properties that have challenges for redevelopment because of those contamination issues, so typically like former manufacturing sites. Often, they're found in core communities or built-up areas. Um, they can be really expensive to redevelop. Um, sometimes people avoid them. They'd rather build in a green field, cause it's a lot cheaper. So that's really why Brownfield Authorities and Brownfield Tiff Financing and Brownfield Grants and Loan Programs are there, is to encourage the redevelopment of those properties. I mean, this is a classic example. Where would you rather try to build something, you know, if the lo- everything else being equal? It's gonna be a lot cheaper to build on the right than it is, or something like that, that you've gotta remediate on the left. Um, why brownfields? A lot of reasons, but there's three main ones. You, you re-energize the local economies by creating, you know, more investment, and, you know, investment supersedes and more investment comes in, and it just kinda snowballs. It creates jobs. Uh, if you look at, you know, you've, all the employment you've created down at North Channel Brewing Company, and that was a brownfield project. Um, increases property values, and you can certainly fund infrastructure. The city has taken advantage of that. Uh, it improves neighborhoods, um, uses existing infrastructure, cleans things up, and reduces sprawl. So those are all really valuable things, and then it also protects the environmental health by cleaning up those contaminated areas. You know, whether that's, uh, capping something, or taking down a structure, or actually removing soils and landfilling, and there's a lot that can happen there. Um, protects the water supply. Uh, sometimes when you cap on it, it creates new green spaces. It just depends on what the project is. Uh, we have a lot of partners, uh, that the Brownfield Authority does. Obviously, we partner with the city, uh, MEDC. Uh, the, I guess it's Eagle now, it's not DEQ anymore, and, uh, the EPA. Uh, the DDA was one of our big partners on the South Washington area Brownfield project. They had to forego their Tiff capture for that to happen. These are some pictures of some brownfield sites in the city. Uh, this is, um, Reith Riley's Asphalt Terminal down on Manistee Lake, kind of a before and after. This project's been completed for quite a while, but it just gives you an idea of the power of being able to do brownfield sort of work. Um, obviously, we've got the old River Park building. You can see it was kinda blighted and sat there for a really long time, and now it's all improved, and I think almost all the units are sold in there.
There's only four for sale.
Only four, yeah, so that's really good. Um, and then, you've got, uh, I can get my mouse to work again. On that, Laura. Can, oh, there we go. North Channel, uh, again, that's when it was the North Channel Outlet, now it's North Channel Brewing, you know, with some apartments and condos up above there. So again, that's, uh, it's really done a nice job of bringing people into the area and, and gets really good reviews, and just a good project. Any questions on the Brownfield Authority?
Can, uh, Brownfield Authority be used to help us with some of the single-family housing blight that we have in town?
I'm not aware of specific, um, programs for that. That's certainly something that we can look into, and we can get Roman to look into as well. Um, that's a little bit outside of their, their bailiwick, but they've rewritten the Brownfield statutes to be very broad. So there, it wouldn't surprise me if there's something that they might be able to assist with, but it's not something we've actively looked into, but we certainly can.
Uh, uh, the only reason I say it is Manistee has an issue with single-family blighted properties.
Right.
This may be some way of getting people interested in, even if you, if you take it one bite at a time, one house at a time, especially if we don't have any projects currently on the, on the books.
Right, right, yeah, that's something we'll, we'll do a little bit of-
I'll light, take two or three and see what we can do.
Yeah, we'll do some research into that and see if there's programs out there. Another good one is the County Land Bank. You know, I know they haven't done a lot, but they are up and running, and so there's probably, you could get maybe creative with some partnerships and things, but we'll, we'll research that and report back on what we find.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Can you, um, bring us up to date as to how things are going with Jocelyn Cove?
Sure, uh, you may have noticed they started another six-unit building over there. Um, that's going up pretty quickly, because this time, instead of building it all stick-built on-site, it looks like they actually brought in walls that were fully constructed. So, that's moving ahead. They're a little bit behind their schedule. That's in the Brownfield Plan, and I know-
Part that I was wondering about.
Right, but that's a, that's a county brownfield. It's a county brownfield. It's not a city. So I've been working with, with Rob to kind of, you know, work through him to make sure that they're trying to meet their, their guidelines. One concern for the city is they haven't built the city's little green space and the gazebo and stuff that they're supposed to. So I know Rob's had some conversations with them, and there's been some correspondence back and forth. Um, the last I spoke to him a couple of months ago, you know, they're moving ahead with the six-unit building, and, you know, they're, they're telling us they're gonna try to be as close as they can to that schedule, but we need to have probably a little more follow-up as they finish this one and make sure they continue on, so. But, the, the other, the alternative is that they just walk away from the project too, so. I think we have to have a little bit of flexibility, as long as they're kinda making steady progress. Um, and they did sell that first unit out pretty quickly, so I don't know if they've pre-sold most of these, or, or I don't know what that status is, but I'm assuming they probably have done some, or they wouldn't have gotten started on it. Um, at some point, though, if they don't follow that guideline, they lose their Tiff, their ability to capture the Tiff. And that's the hammer that the County Brownfield has on them. Any other questions?
Who do you think would grow his marriage downtown? Is that a Brownfield?
Uh, n- not, not directly right now. We've had, we have lots of inquiries. We have people, you know, asking about stuff and projects, and then you don't hear from them, then they come back, and then you don't hear from them, so, you know, we try to encourage them to keep going through the process, but the developer has to be ready and in a position to be able to do that too, so. Um, and I don't get all of those inquiries directly. Sometimes they go straight to Roman, but we, we dialogue back and forth, so. There's a lot of developer activity in town, um, but a lot of it's being driven by the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana. And those people don't wanna go, they, they, there's so much money there, they don't wanna be bothered with the Brownfield process, cause it slows things down. They just wanna get going. And, you know, there's other developers that, that maybe, um, wanna go a little bit different direction. So it really depends on what the project is, what the developer wants to do, what their timelines are. Those all can play into whether or not they get a Brownfield project. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is a time for op- an op- this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens unattended shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council not be read. Is there any one who would like to com- make a, express a concern or comment? Please.
My name is Dennis Skirren. Even though I don't live in the city, I own a lot of property in the city. Uh, my, uh, probably not, uh, complain as much as I, I wanna ask a question from the council. Uh, and, and first, let me say that this year, I thought the city workers were out in force, and they really did a, a, a beautiful job at First Street and Fifth Avenue Beach. Every time I drove through there, there was either the, uh, beach sweeper out, or the, they were cutting grass, or raking, doing something, so. Uh, it seemed like they, uh, put in a little extra effort this year. My question is why, and I talked to the city manager, and he put the onus on you, that you allowed these, uh, let me just- So again, my question is why were, um, fifth-wheel campers, motor homes, commercial trailers, uh- So again, my question is, why were fifth-wheel campers, motor homes, commercial trailers, four-wheel-drive pickup trucks, and anything and everything allowed to pass over that south ball diamond? Because we, the taxpayers, get to fix that mess when it's done. And I was there as recently as today, and there's divots from the stanchions of the fifth-wheel trailers that were there. You can see the commercial trailers there, dual-axle trailers. That thing is designed to hold a backhoe or something, it has no business on a ball diamond. So my question is, once, once somebody that's playing ball, unless you're planning to just abandon that thing, and one of the ball players going out for a fly ball and trips in one of those divots that are still there today, who's going to pay for that mess? The, the taxpayers again, are we going to be sued for that? And I, I looked around, why, why can't those campers and trailers and fifth-wheels and four-wheel-drive trucks and other things be put on that property south of the Lighthouse Park that, where you chop the sand dune down? That's a grassy area, there's no reason that those, those vehicles can't be put over there.
Okay, I mean no disrespect, but this is not a question and answer time. This is a time for you to share your concerns.
The last time I was here, I was told I had blight.
I will make sure that you.
I don't want to hear about anything.
Well, we're listening to you. I will make, I will make sure.
What I'm worried about is five minutes. Take a look at what's happening there. It's like everything else in this city. The last time I was here, we spoke about blight, and Mick brought it up today. A lot of that is personal responsibility, by the way. And we had a blight officer at one time, and sure, there was a little problem on Second Street, but he asked for that. So put some people on, start fining these people, and for God's sake, do your due diligence. Don't, don't wreck a ballpark when you have other sites available. And that's my comment. Thank you for listening. Good day.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there, I'm Jennifer Teller. My husband and I own a property at seven-one-two Harbor Drive here in Manistee. I myself was born and raised in Manistee, and lived two doors behind the Salty Dog. That was our family residence. And our family has been taxpayers here in Manistee for over a hundred and forty years. That's a long time, and we haven't asked for anything, other than, I'm here tonight to ask you to please instruct the city manager to instruct this, the DPW supervisor to trim one limb that has grown extremely long, taking away the view that we, that our house had to Lake Michigan. Now, as a taxpayer, that's not a lot to ask. We have offered to pay for that limb, I have an arborist who has gone there and said, "No problem, you can, you can cut it." I pay the fee, I don't cost the city money, like deer call people did, to a tune of what? Ten thousand dollars? Just the other night, I saw four fawn. That's twenty percent of the, was there twenty deer?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three deer killed. They're already back. That's just in one little street. They're going to be back for another ten thousand dollars, and you're already struggling with money tonight, just to supply people to keep them healthy. Could I just say that I, I think that that's just not the way to spend money? When people are here asking for city services that are willing to pay for it, that a view of Lake Michigan is like, that's what people want. All your residential development has been along the water. Your condos are with view of the water, the new condos at John, Jocelyn Cove are all about water. It's about the view to Lake Michigan these days. We're in a new era now for what people want, and the city services should reflect that, especially when we're paying for it. We're not asking you to do that. The city, the DPW doesn't even have to be involved. With, with this arborist certified, he does the work. And we get what we want as taxpayers. Other small groups have gotten what they wanted as taxpayers. The, the Manmade Lake group, a few years ago, wanted the Fred Mighty's removed because it was taking away their view and their access to Manmade Lake. They came to the Parks Commission, which I was on, and we were all for it. Yes, hey, we want that for you. It cost you fourteen hundred dollars to do that. I'm asking for something on a small way that I'm willing to pay for. That's not a lot. I've given you a policy to use that came from Harbor Springs. You have it. It can be tweaked easily to say "City of Manistee." It doesn't have to say "Harbor Springs." You can charge us, those that want limb trim issues accomplished, charge five hundred dollars. That will stop anything that says, "Hey, where will it stop?" You don't have to be afraid of all, a bunch of people coming and wanting that, if there's a substantial down payment or cost to us. We're a small group, yes, but also, there's a small group of people that want golf carts in the town. They wrote one letter to the city manager, and now you're doing a policy on it. I've given the policy for limb trim to you for three years, and nothing has happened. I don't even get a phone call, I don't get an email back from anybody even saying, "Hey, received." I don't see that as respecting taxpayers, or doing or giving city services to, for a small group. My neighbor has, that's in your packet I gave you, she has the same issue. She's lived there for forty years, built that house there, there's been no trees there. Now, one limb from a tree that is not in our sightline has taken away the view that our homes had. And all we want is that the urban forest be maintained, and I understand the DPW doesn't have to do it, but the cities of Holland, Muskegon, Luddington, Frankfurt, Traverse City, Potoske, Harbor Springs, Harbor Springs has all said, "No problem," and I have all of their permission, I have their names, their phone numbers. If you want to go ahead and check with them, you have it in the packets I've emailed.
One minute.
So, all I'm asking is for one limb, not a tree, just one limb. You give other people consideration for their requests, just like the ones that I managed or mentioned. The Lakeshore Motel complained when the new concession stand was taking away their view of Lake Michigan. You granted that, you moved it. I have a view, and a tree limb is taking away my view. I'm just asking for a simple limb trim. And like I say, just because your policy, your verbal policy has always been "No," that is like ancient history. We're in a new era, and we just expect Manistee to come with the new era of what people are looking for when they come to Manistee. So if you could see your way through to read all my comments, I've sent you many letters, the state of Michigan even allows you to, to do that, and here it is. The Michigan Department of Natural Resources Law, Natural River Act, Part 305 PA, 451 of nineteen ninety-four, allows for selective removal or pruning to maintain view from private property through public property.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Officials and staff?
No, no, we have.
Got one more. All right, come up, sir, sorry.
Hi, Fred Walter, live on St. Mary's, understand it's going to be returned to Mitchum Street. I want to comment on the ambulance. I'm sorry that all the people from North Light left. To hear a citizen's commitment, I've put in forty, forty years at West Shore Hospital. And at that time, and over those times, we started with, and I started in the emergency room. We started, our ambulance service was Adam's Funeral Home. Now, you probably remember them, you probably remember, you don't even know what I'm talking And anyway, in, as it has progressed, that West Shore took over the ambulance service in the last few years ago completely, and they were able to provide pretty good adequate service through the county. Most of the time, they had a three-man, three-unit on. One on Calva, which covered that area of the county, excuse me, one at West Shore, which covered that area of the county, and came into the city a few times on mutual aid. And the third unit was available and used for transfers. Now, they're saying, they don't, and I know, and have been told, that they lost a lot of help when they took over the ambulance service from months in South, oops, I mean months in Manistee. That they lost a lot of employees, a lot of paramedics quit. He talked about them being shorthanded. The answer, I think, to two of the questions, or the answer is, get them to get on their, back on the road, and get the people, get the proper equipment and out there. And the other is to, that I want, as a citizen, and as the older folks up there probably want, to be able to pick up that phone and have an ambulance at my door if I need it in a reasonable, reasonable time. I don't want them to be in Bear Lake, or Calva, or anyplace else. And the last thing I have to say, that the chief brought up the fact that he needs more men. Now, I'm going to look around, nobody's got tomatoes. I agree with him. I think the fire department needs more employees. I have always thought that. When I had people that worked there that I knew well, I agreed with them that to have a two-man unit on, or a three-man unit on, is insufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your input. Now, is there anybody else? Can't see with these lights.
Jen Teller, seven-twelve Harbor Drive. When you were talking about the four-and-a-half percent, that's what you used to be able to, what you used to take out in, in order to make it spendable, and now it's been reduced to four percent, maybe in order to fund the additional people that you need to have in the fire department or EMS, maybe it would be time to reconsider going back to that four-and-a-half percent and using that money to help the people of Manistee and the Manistee County. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Bradford. Nothing more, Your Honor, thank you. City Attorney.
Nothing, Your Honor.
And let's see, we got Sean.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Engineer. DPW.
Nothing, broken.
Reference to comment, reference to ball diamond, I have during the actual event, saw that myself and talked at length with Mr. McCullough about that. We're going to hopefully meet now and well in advance of next year's event to try to manage that a little better, because I thought that that was probably inappropriate, some of the things that were occurring. Maybe try to sticker the people that are needed to be in that area with trailers, put them in an appropriate area, so there is actually already being talked about, reference that, so we hope I don't have that recurrence for next year. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Council members, I think I got everybody out there. Council members.
Nothing.
Mr. Gabowski.
Well, the thing is, is we decked it with the city police, and we spend seventy-seven thousand, we need twenty thousand more, we're going to court, we're going to have MERS if we don't handle that. How much is this thing going to cost us if we just hired a man and, and been below his budget? There's a lot of money just going out, and, and we're not getting any closer to getting it settled.
You're correct, it's a lot of money. It's not, it wasn't just about hiring one man, though there was a lot of other issues.
I realize that. I've been on the bargaining boards years ago, and I just think it's getting out of
Mr. Zmansky.
Oh, I have one more issue. Okay, I was down at the public trailers with the plastic and the, and the paper, and talking with somebody, I won't say the name because I could lose his job, but he says when they collect that garbage, or the plastic, they don't do anything with it, they take it right to the dump and dump it in the dump. So why are we having a dumpster down there, and we're just throwing it in the dump anyway? I can throw away my garbage at home and have the garbage picked up. And I thought the paper we were going to try to get taken care of, and see if Catholic Central or Manistee High would absorb all the paper, that would handle a lot of that, because I see a lot of people are coming down there with their big boxes, and they're just throwing it all down there, and so when the people go down there, they can't even put their papers in the damn thing. So they need to take and, and let's get this thing arranged, and if we're not using them dumpsters, get rid of them. Thank you.
I, two things. First of all, I, I wanted to thank all of the, the city for all the work on the, the Forest Festival. I thought it was a very well-done event, and I know that the city is, is the, the power behind the volunteers. I mean, they're, they're the ones who, without their support and their help, the volunteers couldn't do all the good things that they do, but I thought it was a really great event. It was nice to see so many people here. It was nice to see River Street packed for the parade and all the events. And then the second thing, just checking on the status of our blight officer. I know that's probably more comments I get on, on citizens concerned about neighbors that have, you know, not taken care of their pro, their, their properties, and quite often they're, they're vacant, sometimes they're not, but it seems to be a worsening issue, and just wondering when, if we have an, an idea when we'd be able to get that person on board to kind of do a, a more hardy job of.
Proposal was put together and presented to the city manager, reference having a blight officer and utilizing our, our on-duty personnel and what we would accomplish with that. I can tell you daily, everything that gets sent to the city manager and down to me gets sent out, and just yesterday, we were out on two of them, so we're, we're aggressively pursuing every single one that comes in, we don't put anything on the backlog, the letters are sent out, we're doing everything we can. I think we're able to handle it right now with what we have. I can tell you this, though, I think that we need to have an honest discussion, though, as the city council, reference blight. What I mean is, we can tackle this, we can work with Attorney Saylor on this, but then we get instances like Tudoffie where we have authorization to raise, we don't have the funds to raise it.
Right.
If we're going to move forward with this and keep tackling this, and we're going to work, you know, as, as a city police department really hard, along with, on the city attorney, we need to have something like a revolving, small amount of money that maybe we can tear down one house a year. Just something to think about.
Sure.
That we can, we're going to need, so we can do these things. Because we're going to wind up having more houses that will be in the Tudoffie purview, you know, and we're going to need to tear down, so just something to think about for maybe next budget cycle. Thanks.
One, one more comment on blight. You probably saw it in your tax newsletter, but we have added a feature on the website to be able to report blight conditions, and it gets routed to the police department. I'm not sure if you've gotten any from that yet, but it, it just launched the first of July, so hopefully that gives citizens another portal to be able to do that in.
And that's what I was thinking, the blight officer is actually a single point of contact. Because part of the issues is people, they don't get, they don't feel like they're getting a response, because it doesn't, you know, they complain on Wednesday, they expect Thursday it to be handled, and it's, takes longer than that, but having somebody that could follow up with a phone call and just say, "We've got this, this is what we've done," and then in seven or eight days, if, if we'll let you know, progress report. And, and I don't expect the, the police to be able to, to keep up with that kind of correspondence, but.
Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, I got one question. Would it be a big deal to let, let her cut down one branch? I mean, she's been going on for four or five years, or something like that, before I was sitting up here, would it be a big deal to say, "Go ahead and cut that branch down"?
Please.
Yeah, I, I personally think that we should at least look at, at addressing the policies that she has provided, because again, I don't have a chance to read it, but it does make sense that we do have a written policy that gives, gives the city manager something where he's not making a decision over the Parks Commission, yet it, it has some quantifying factors where people just can't say, "Well, you know, cut that tree down or not."
Well, I don't believe we've ever had a work session on it. I'd, I'd like to see it added to our agenda on a work session, to talk about it.
Yep.
I think, I'm sorry, were you done?
Well, I was with that topic. Go ahead.
Just on that same topic. I think-
I think if we do it or not, we need to make a policy. I mean, we made policies for, or we're looking into policies for the golf cart. And I just think we need something instead of just letting it go. And I agree, like with, we have people have requested, okay, can we have golf cart? That was granted. Can we have deer call? That was granted.
And we had a work session on it.
Right.
A lot of.
I, can't we do something?
Get it on the agenda.
If, I would like it on a work session. If Beaton wants it.
Well, just cut the tree, the branch down, let's get going on the other meeting. It's going to take forever to get these meetings going all the time. Cut the branch down.
So you may note that we want that on a work session, okay.
Also, I don't know what we can do, but I really do feel strongly that we have a representative from the county, sitting in the audience, the county commissioner. Shifting costs to the county residents sounds like a good idea if they're not paying for anything. But on the other hand, let's face it, guys, we, city residents pay county taxes as well. So I really would like to see a robust discussion involving Munson because obviously, cutting services does trickle down and it does hurt us. And they need to be aware of it. We never took a public, we never came to a resolution, we never said anything about the maternity ward closing to Munson Hospital. We kept quiet about it. We didn't, we could have spoken up and said how we felt about it as, as city council representatives. It's, it's time to really have a conversation with Munson. So I think this is part of what we need to do.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Cooper.
Just, I am making it clear again, I'm not running. People in the fourth district, you've voiced opinions before, not your chance to step up.
My turn?
Yes.
So, back on the ambulance, I thought, just had a thought that, you know, I'm not always in the city. I may be out in the county, so at seventy-six, I kind of want to see some ambulance, some good ambulance service throughout the whole county, not just the city. So we need to work towards that, I guess. I want to thank everybody who came tonight and spoke out. We do appreciate the input. With that, I'll take emotional turn.
You got it.
Second.